Any more light? Can I get like a little light?
Oh, I'll get you a little light. Like a little desk light. It'll be cute.
City Hall can do it. Okay. The July 3rd, 2025 Special Meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. Please remember, public comment is only for the items listed on the agenda. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. May we please have a roll call?
Councilwoman Conrad?
Here.
Councilwoman Stewart?
Here.
Councilwoman Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
President.
Mayor Riggins?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Norm, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and不可
May we please have a report on the posted name of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 1st, 2025.
May we please have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So we have one public comment for closed session. Ann Kay? Is our speaker, is our... Just one moment. It's your right to speak, it's so...
Beeler?
There we go.
Beeler, does it work?
Please proceed.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So I provided an email to everybody that we received via the Public Records Act. It was regarding Candace Bond and any communications between the city and Candace Bond. Our scope at the time was from March until she got hired, supposedly in May 12th, which of course that wasn't, didn't work out, so we had to move that further. But in that timeframe, we found this email, and I provided you guys a copy. It's dated March 5th, not May 12th. And your copied was two BBK lawyers. Mayor Riggins and Councilwoman Conrad were also on this email, which is redacted, by the way. Candace's Bond's email address is redacted, and we don't know what else is redacted, but you have a copy of it, the public does not at the moment. They will. Go to sayrabbit.com, and I'll put a copy up there for everybody to see. As a matter of fact, we have lots of public records, and I know people say it's a waste of time, but this is how you get to the bottom of it. The city council members were in negotiation outside of the setting, open setting, at V's, Lucky's, and Scott's. We have those emails, we have text messages with Mayor Riggins, and we don't know what else we're going to find. What we have right now is the email in front of you. I just want to know why you have two BBK lawyers, two council members, and a person who says they're just volunteering their time, meeting, using official city communications, I would ask that the city council launch an investigation or their attorney into how this works. And Steve, sir, you should not be laughing, because I know how you feel, and it's wrong. You guys voted this person in, yet you were negotiating for her agreement in March. Did you even interview any other candidates? I just want to let you know, and I'm going to let everybody know, the subject of this particular email was to bring Candace Bond up to speed on the school separation. You guys were talking with somebody on the outside, with two lawyers, two council members, about splitting up the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. Now, I know I only have 43 seconds left, but there's much more. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
No, we don't have any raised hands on Zoom for this item.
Okay.
Madam, could I comment?
Of course.
Okay. I think the mayor was kind in allowing that to go on, because it had nothing to do with anything that's on the agenda today for this special meeting. Excuse me, you don't get to speak at this point. It had nothing to do with anything on the agenda for today. I can understand how the speaker might not have appreciated that, because the agenda's somewhat opaque when it comes to the closed session matter, but it has nothing to do with Candace Bond. Secondly, this speaker comes here and regularly raises questions without providing much factual basis, but the questions are kind of strange, because like, what is redacted is pretty obvious when you look at this email. What's redacted, like every email that's ever produced pursuant to any cities, any government, any agencies' records act requests, are email addresses of individuals. So there's no mystery there, there's nothing else redacted. There's also nothing improper about two council members having a conversation with somebody. So I, we constantly get these, "This is strange, I've seen this, this is weird, this is illegal." There's no basis for any of these assertions. If the speaker would like to come forward with some kind of appropriate legal analysis, it would be helpful, but nothing I've heard yet raises any questions of any sort. That's it.
Okay, great. Anyone else have comments?
I just wanted to also say that it's a waste of our, I mean, I think you have every right to do this, but we're on an ad hoc for school separation. I don't think we were bringing anybody into a conversation they had. It doesn't matter, what it is, is it's just an improper use of our time when we're going through such disasters. And it's sad, really. I feel bad for the city, I feel bad for the council and the staff, that we go through fires and devastation, and this is what we come up with. But you have every right, and good to see you. See ya.
Thanks. And all I'll say is that I have every confidence in our staff to make sure that we are staying within our legal requirements, including the Brown Act at every application. So with nothing further, we will now recess to closed session in the Westward Room to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. We will return to open session for the closed session report before continuing with our additional item.
Oh.
Yes?
What do we, we've got staff here, I wonder if we could just amend the agenda very quickly now that I look at it closer, to be able to get this petition out of the way, so the staff can, then have to wait?
The only question I would have is if there's a possibility that there might be speakers that might come later in the morning, just because they knew we were having closed session?
All right.
That'd be my only concern. Does anybody else?
Unless that's a legal restriction, I'd join Doug in asking that we address the public item first, but if there's a legal issue that we can't do that, then obviously we can't.
Council members, there is no legal restriction to do that. You can, you can take the item now if it is the pleasure of the mayor to move it up.
I'm happy to hear a motion. If you have time to put a card in, if you'd like to speak on it. We don't know if we're moving it around, so I'll entertain a motion to reorder the agenda?
I'll make a motion to reorder the agenda to move new business item 1A to...
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? None? Okay, we're going to move item 1A to before closed session. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes.
I love a staff report, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll have a brief, I'll be providing a brief presentation on this item for your consideration. As you know, we received an urgent request from the governor's staff to consider some options to further implement the governor's executive order that was issued in January of this year, to expedite recovery for wildfire-affected communities by suspending certain regulatory requirements while prioritizing public safety and resilience. At this time, again, per the correspondence we've had with the governor's staff, there is prioritization for addressing building code. Sorry. So as we take a look at the draft letter that was prepared by staff, it cites two different sections of the building code that have been targeted because they have a significant cost component, and they will not directly affect building and safety standards. The first one that's called out is the 2019 building code requirement that requires all new residential construction to install rooftop solar and battery backup. There are, of course, benefits associated with this code requirement, however, there is a significant cost component associated with that. The other section of building code updates is one that the city has not currently implemented, but has been evaluating for implementation, and that relates to the 2025 California Building Code standards, which intend to upgrade building efficiency and other related standards to improve energy conservation. There are, of course, benefits associated with that, but there is a cost component with, say, utilizing higher quality grade appliances and adding additional building insulation, and taking additional measures to improve the quality of the building envelope to reduce energy use. However, it is staff's recommendation that it would be appropriate to consider postponing the implementation of the 2025 building code because of the cost savings associated with that, and that's really the focus of the, of the letter. We did receive some requests to consider other adjustments beyond the building code, however, because this is the focus, the building code is the focus of the governor's staff's request at this time, we've chosen to focus exclusively on building code-related issues. So available for any questions or clarification as needed by the council.
Do we have any clarifying questions for staff before public comment?
There was a letter, an email I saw from Kent, from Ambassador Bond, where the other requests that came in, we're going to clear those with Lindsey Horvath before we, is that?
Yes, the letter that you're referencing is one that we received from a Malibu community-based group.
Right.
And there are a number of items there that are either being worked on separately or in conjunction with the staff of Supervisor Lindsey Horvath.
Cool.
So...
That's all I need to know.
Yeah.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any clarifying question?
I would like to clarify that last. So there is, those items that were from the rebuild concerns are still being worked on? Is that what I just heard? Okay, cool.
So I think that the, if I may, the governor's request right now is for suspension of building code items. I think some of the other requests have to do not necessarily directly with construction, but with other ways to possibly streamline and facilitate...
Thank you.
Processes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a public speaker, Ann Kay.
First of all, this item was supposed to be heard, I guess, in your open session, when you come back.
We're currently in open session.
But you moved it. People who are watching or wanting to participate right now probably are not aware that you moved the item before you adjourned into closed session. You opened up the closed session, then you open up open session to take this item, correct? And now you're going to go into closed session. Now, how is the public supposed to know, follow what's going on? This is, this is not open and transparent government. I believe that this is wrong to do and to deny people the ability to tune in, participate, by basically playing musical chairs with agenda items. And this is exactly what happened on May 12th, when Mayor Riggins tried to reorder the agenda, and at the same time, adding an agenda item that didn't even exist. And I think this needs to stop. Why don't you talk? Come here. Come here.
He's free to put in a speaker slip if he wishes to.
Put in your speaker slip and come up here and...
If you could please stick to the topic.
Well, I'm sorry, there's somebody in the audience who wants to speak.
And he knows the procedure, and he can fill out a speaker slip. This is your time to speak on what you would like to...
The public has a right to know. And apparently, the city of Malibu feels that they're on a need-to-know basis, and they don't need to know, and I don't appreciate Helen saying, "We're dealing with all this fire stuff." Yes, we are, but why are we trying to negotiate a deal splitting the Malibu School District, the Santa Monica Unified School District?
Now going off record, off topic.
You can redact that.
Would either our city attorney or the city clerk like to address the reordering of the agenda and the legality of it? Please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So council has the prerogative to reorder the agenda. The open session was first held when, at the start of the meeting, and we did not go into closed session. That's point number one. And the ability to rearrange the agenda is for sake of efficiency, and the interest here is so that closed session discussions can be prolonged without the public having to wait for the open session to begin after closed session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have any additional insight on that, or?
No, the city attorney spoke to it well, as well, no items were noticed for a time certain on this agenda, so any business could be heard after the start time of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
May I say also, you know, it's not our job to educate the public as to the law, although we do, we try to do it from time to time as best we can, but every single agenda item is subject to being reordered at every single meeting unless there's a specific statement in the agenda to the contrary, and everyone should understand that if they seek to be knowledgeable about how government works. So when an agenda is printed, unless it states specifically that an item will be held at a specific time, everyone is on constructive notice under the law that anything can be heard at any time if there's a motion made and it's accepted by the council. So once again, the speaker is showing, comes here expressing statements about what the law is and how we're acting improperly without having any knowledge of how the law works.
Do we have any online speakers?
Yes, we have two raised hands. The first is from Joe Drummond.
Okay. Joe, go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm approaching the Mexican border, I'm sorry I'm not there, and I appreciate you all being there, given the holiday weekend coming up, and I appreciate that this item was moved up so that I didn't have to wait to, till the end after closed session, so thank you so much. I did send in a response to you all, to Ambassador Bond's second response. Her first response is very positive to the Malibu Rebuild Task Force requests for some specific building code additions, or requests for the government, governor. We saw this letter and we're like, oh, this is the perfect opportunity that we've been working on with Jackie Irwin's office and Lindsey Horvath's office already, so they asked us to give this letter to you all, to, to write to the governor with these building code requests, changes, and then, and you are doing these requests, which we appreciate, but these are not as important to, to expedite our rebuilds. I mean, this is cost savings, for sure, but it's not going to stop developers from swooping in and taking up all of our lots, because we can't rebuild quickly and expeditiously. Like, there were specific building code requests in our letter, such as the unaffected, like to change the, the category from new construction to rebuild is something the governor can do, that we can just put through, like if we were remodeling or something, like it would just be, anything unaffected would be grandfathered, like, like our setbacks, our pre-existing structures, our foundations, our septic systems, all of that. And then, there, there are, that the geology, I mean, we cannot, we cannot build more than 10% where we live regardless, so we don't know why there would be any additional requirements for, for our geology. The governor can, something like that. I mean, I've, we've stated it, that, I know that Abe is submitting all the 20 years of, geological reports for, for Big Rock, I don't know if he's submitting them for the other, the other seawatering districts, but we, it basically states that we haven't moved in decades, because we have, have not had a ton of development. Like, there's, there has been no more than 10%, so I think that's something...
Thank you, Joe. Have a good time in Mexico.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, our next speaker?
Our final speaker is Danny Smith.
Danny, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, council, for making what I would call baby steps toward addressing the building code and non-life and safety issues. However, it needs to be publicly stated that the community letter staff and council have received specifically addresses building code items. The suggestion that that letter solely focused on unrelated legislative matters is incorrect. I don't mind the city working with Supervisor Horvath, I think it's a great idea, but the governor specifically asked what can be waived, and you have given him a purposefully incomplete answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, that was our final one?
Yes, that was the, one more hand has been raised, but the two speakers who raised their hand when the item was called have been recognized.
Okay, go ahead.
Then we have a raised hand.
And this will be our final speaker.
Our final speaker and our final participant on Zoom is Wade Major.
Wade?
Yeah, hi.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, no, I just, I just wanted to weigh in really quickly on what Danny was just saying. I, I do think it's critically important, and I know that everyone thinks this is kind of backdoor and self-certification and whatnot, but I do think the issue of grandfathering is really, really important. There's a question not just among homeowners, but among contractors and engineers and architects. They, they don't know what the, the official policy is on, you know, it, does like-for-like mean since 2002? Does it mean since 1993? Does it mean since 1960? Like-for-like has to mean like-for-like, whether the house was built in the 1940s, the 60s, the 80s, the 90s, or 10 years ago. It's like-for-like, and we need to be clear on that, and staff needs clear direction that if any part of the house, foundation, septic, whatnot, is functioning, was not damaged by the fire, is pre-existing and was fine before the fire, doesn't need to be reevaluated, you know, if it's safe and you can certify it, doesn't need to be replaced, doesn't, shouldn't need to be upgraded, it just, it is, and you can get your like-for-like back, and that helps people with their costs, it helps them with their timetable, it helps them with the logistics, it lowers the stress, and it gets people confident that they can build back again. And I think our crisis right now is less bureaucracy than confidence. We need people to feel like there's hope, and, and the more that we can give them that hope, the faster we're going to get back to normal. That's it, thanks.
Thanks, Wade. Okay, that'll conclude our public comment. Who would like to go first?
I got a quick, I guess my question is, why aren't we hearing this from Abe Roy? I thought that's what we, I thought that was the ambassador's job, to sort of take all these concerns, bring it to the council, so we got one, we're speaking with one voice, he can go back and talk to the people on his side and make sure, I mean, I'm just, I, I thought that's what we had an ambassador for. If we're not going to use the ambassador, why do we have that position?
Richard, do you want to?
What I can share is that staff has been working closely with Abe Roy as the appointed rebuild ambassador for weeks. We have a weekly meeting with him. We've been trying to work through some of these issues that have been pointed out in the letter. Most of them are quite complicated, in particular as it relates to requests related to grandfathering, because, you know, there are certain portions of Malibu that have significant landslide susceptibility.
I agree with you. I, I, that was really my concern. It sort of says, if we got one voice is coming in asking the questions, and we got one voice going back out, so everybody's on the same piece of sheet music, I think it makes everybody's life better. So I just didn't understand why we're not, you know, Abe is not the spokesman for this stuff, but that's just...
Doug, do you want to go next?
Yeah, I looked over this letter, and I appreciate the fact it looks like it's a two-step process, and I think that's a very effective way to do this. This focuses in exactly on the building standards for efficiency and higher cost to reconstruction. We need to be cutting the cost wherever we possibly can, especially if it isn't a life and safety issue, and for that reason, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter as submitted.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Do we have a second on that motion, or? Okay.
I'm not seconding that motion up, but I'd like to talk.
Perfect.
So, and I'm going to be a little over the map here. I don't know the background of this in terms of why we're doing this today as opposed to a week from now, or a week ago, or a month ago, or what have you, but unless there's some kind of back-channel communications that are going on, that the governor wants our list and wants it by a certain date, and this is a Kabuki dance where we're just, you know, going through, asking for something that we've already been told is being considered and will be agreed upon, I think we need to take a little more time, and I mean, I, this is, again, this is the kind of thing I've been saying from the beginning, we should have done a long time ago, but the fact that we haven't done it, we're not ready to do it based on this letter that I see today. And the reason I say that is that I know that the residents want substantially more things waived than are in this letter, and unless, there's already been all kinds of back-channel discussions that this is all we're going to get, I think we should ask for everything that we can reasonably ask for in one request rather than piecemeal this. In fact, I, if people haven't paid attention, I had had a problem going way back to the very first governor's order, that we didn't put this kind of request in there then, and many other things, and we got what we got, and then it was, well, we already got this, so now we can't ask for other things right now. So I'd like to make a full request of everything that our residents want, that we reasonably agree is appropriate to ask for, rather than just these limited items, because I think there are more things. We, among, so that's one thing. On the landslide issue, I appreciate that we have geological issues here that may not exist elsewhere where the Palisades Fire, or the Eaton, the other fire, were. But to the extent the state would be willing to waive things that would facilitate building, notwithstanding that, we can always impose greater restrictions, but we can't ease things. In other words, let me, let me state that a little differently. If the state waives requirements, we can still create requirements, because the state's waiver of the requirements doesn't preclude greater requirements from local municipalities. But where the state has requirements, local municipalities don't have the ability to waive them themselves. So we would get the greatest flexibility if the state were as flexible as possible, and we, we asked for the waiver of as many things as the state would be willing to waive. We can always, on a case-by-case basis or area-by-area basis, impose greater requirements. So I think that we shouldn't be restricting our requests on the basis of concerns about certain areas. Relatedly, and this is not specific to this letter, but it, it dovetails, we need a policy document that we talked about months ago now, for things like, for example, what does like-for-like mean? We had, we had lengthy discussion about this, we came to, I think, consensus as to giving direction to the staff as to what we wanted it to mean, but we never formally implemented it. And one example, and I'm seeing examples of people having difficulty with that in the sense of, like-for-like is a two-step process. What was there, what's going to be there? And there's a, there's a debate about how you determine what was there, and what does it mean to be what was there? Does it mean only what was permitted and was lawful at the time that it was? Does it mean only what was permitted and was lawful at the time that it was permitted? Or does it mean what was, what in fact was there the day the fire struck, whether or not it was permitted? Does it mean what was there the day the fire struck without regard to whether it even could have lawfully been permitted? We had various different views on some of those things. We need finality so that people can know for certain what they're allowed to do. And I think right now, we don't have that. It's being done on an ad hoc basis, and it's causing confusion. So we need to get that determined. I mean, I, for example, believe that the governor's original order suggested, if not stated, that whatever you had on your property the day that it burned, whether it was permitted or not permitted, whether it was lawful or not lawful, you have the right to rebuild it plus up to 10%. Some people may disagree with that, but we need to nail that down, because that dovetails with these issues that we're, that we're dealing with now. What does it mean to have been destroyed with respect to both the full property as well as elements of the property? We have the ability to interpret what destroyed means. It may mean, we may determine it means less than what others say it means, in which case elements could still be reused, even if they're damaged and reparable, whereas someone else might consider them destroyed and needing to be replaced. Again, this dovetails with the things that we're asking for right now. But bottom line is, I think there are many more things we can be asking for from the governor that aren't in this letter and ought to be in this letter. I don't know what the list is. I think we ought to be having a public discussion of that, and we do it quickly and get it out. But I think this is inadequate, and I'm concerned that once we ask for these, if we get these, if we try to ask for something further, we're going to be met with the response of, well, you had your opportunity, we gave you what you asked for, it's too late.
Helen?
Just a quick question. Don't we have something coming up on the schedule for a policy review?
Yes, we are working on scheduling a special meeting to discuss the rebuild policy document, but we are still confirming availability for that date, so we haven't finalized it, but we are sketching that soon.
But that's within the next few weeks, I believe.
That is what we're hoping to confirm.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I agree with Bruce. I agree that getting more guidance on the terms from the governor, I think, I don't know the strategy, and if there is one, or if there's a timeline, like a deadline, which we should be respecting. But if there's not, I kind of feel like you can't, we can't keep going back and asking, so let's just give them a big document, ask for what we think we need. Whether or not we agree with some of the more constructing aspects, like the geological stuff, that's too technical for me, but the broad strokes, like to define some of these terms, because I struggle with them personally, and I know that for three and a half more years, I'm going to have more kind of ambiguity in these terms, like rebuild, destroyed I hadn't thought of, but a like-for-like, what was there? So I would like to see it more fleshed out with some other aspects of what residents need if there's no timeline or deadline. Again, if it causes strategy where you get nothing because we've asked for everything, and somebody knows that, then I would think differently. But you might as well ask for everything and see what you get, and then you get what you get, and you might get upset, but we can't always help the residents. It has to come down from the governor. So, thank you.
So where I land on this is that while I see there is a need to have other items, these are targeted specifically to building code items, which our residents are trying to get their plans together in order to submit to building plan check, and these items are relevant to those submittals. And so it's relevant to their plans and whether or not they can move forward with their submittals. By focusing on the, the high-ticket items that some of the aspirational things are with the photovoltaic, backup battery, heat pumps, they desire to go for all-electric homes, those all add additional expenses to our residents right now when they're trying to design their homes. And I believe this document is seeking to focus in on the building code. Many of the other items that are being asked for are kind of outside that scope of the actual building code. So, well, yes, a more comprehensive document might be good. I think also taking the approach of targeting it to a specific item within that, and then all those elements that fit within that. I think with geology, environmental health, septic systems, et cetera, a lot of the additional restrictions that are in that are actually from our municipal code, not necessarily the California building code. The questions I have about this is, the 2025 building code hasn't been adopted by the city yet. So I'm a little confused about asking for something we, as a council, haven't even adopted yet. So should we be focusing on the 2022 building code? Or are there just aspects of the building code, such as the ones I mentioned with the photovoltaic or the all-electric items? You know, the conversation regarding the like-for-like, it's always been a policy and a practice, and I believe even a requirement, that if your home was destroyed, you don't build it back to those code standards. It's always that you come up to the code standards of the current day. Where the question is, is these code standards specifically are adding an extreme amount of expense to a homeowner, and while we should encourage them to move forward with the more energy-efficient and energy independence with photovoltaic, I think the cost of that is in the tens of thousands of dollars, and so it can add quite a bit of money. And, you know, insurance, you have a line on them, you can pay for coverage for a code upgrade. So I think that it's already kind of, it should be known to homeowners that that is an option that you move forward with. I would suggest that we schedule another town hall where we can revisit some of the subjects that we did early on, because I think now people are in a space where they're not, um, dealing with the aspects of the immediate devastation of losing their home and losing everything about them. So I think right now, maybe they have a clearer ability to have discussions about these items and these questions that are coming up, and maybe we can clarify the terminology, we can get more clear consensus between what staff is saying something is, what the professionals are saying something is, what the homeowners are hearing, because we may not all be using the same language and terminology when discussing things. And I think having an opportunity to come together and flesh those out in a more sit-down. We did the, the one where we had separate tables down here, and we were talking about design, something, I think something like that would be really beneficial, where the council actually sits down with the residents and the design professionals, and we have those conversations. I think that brought a lot of clarity and understanding, and we can come up with a terminology and a definitions less of a particular item, so everybody is speaking the same language. Because I think a lot of that's going on also, especially with the geology. When you ask for a soils report, some people are thinking that's having to do with the landslide issue, and they don't feel that's necessary because of something. Well, soils report can also just tell you what type of materials that the ground is so that your structural engineer can do the engineering to design your foundation in your house. So there's different times when the same words are used for different types of documents. So I think we need some clarity in that. I would recommend that we go ahead and put this request in. We can at least initiate the conversation, and this will lead to a more clarification of exactly what we can work with the governor and other departments in the state to try and bring some relief to our things. So I'm going to go ahead and second Doug's motion, and if there's any other discussion.
One quick question. Are other cities responding to the governor's request?
This request came up very suddenly and very unexpectedly, and it was focused on soliciting input on just building code, standards that could be relaxed.
And I guess my, the question is, if other cities have been, also are part of this request, okay, and are sending their information in, and they get their stuff in before we do, I mean, there's the risk the governor's going to vote on their stuff and sort of let us sit on the back burner. So I just, I'm just wondering if we're doing this by ourselves, if we, or we're the only applicant, or other people are playing also.
That's a great point. We haven't had the ability to confirm.
I'd like to just make a quick comment. When we were working with the governor right after the fire, governor's office and HCD, there was a very active two-way conversation, and I think the consensus at that time, and I doubt if it's changed, was that we'll get this done, and we're going to keep learning as we go along. Things are going to pop up that we're going to need to address. I think this is one of those pop-ups that need to be addressed. I will say, I had a conversation with Yolanda Bundy on this yesterday, as mentioned, and she requested we move this forward quickly, and I concur. I do think we're going to have another bite at the apple, things will keep coming up. I do think we know a lot more, we did, we know a lot more today than we did two weeks ago, two months ago, at the time of the fire. So let's be cognizant of the fact that this is an evolving situation as opposed to a point in time that will never be repeated. So let's, I'd encourage us to vote for this and get it passed and get it on to the governor, and I think that's a good point about, let's make sure we don't lay us one at the table, we may not find the table open to us.
Bruce?
Okay, so I think at least two or three of us have asked whether there's a timing issue that's imposed. I'm hearing the governor's asking for this, I'm hearing that. I haven't seen a letter, it's not in the staff report, it's, there's no reference to a request from the governor in the letter. It all sounds like we're initiating this. So I'd like to understand the background of how it is we're here at this moment in time, making this request to the governor. What communications have we gotten, and in what form, from the governor's office that are prompting us to be proposing to send this letter?
My role in this has been fairly limited, so I don't have that, an answer to that question. I can only speak to our ability to incorporate the feedback that we've received as staff since posting the draft letter that we have crafted. I don't see any problem with us amending our draft letter to incorporate these requests that we've received, and we should be able to turn it around if that is the will of the council, and to submit it promptly, just as we've been requested to do.
I appreciate that, Richard. If you don't know the answer, that's fine. But it's, you know, I would not know from reading the agenda report and from reading the letter that there's been a request for us to make requests. It's, this more, this sounds, when I read this without having any back knowledge, which I don't have, I read this to say, hey, you did this for everyone, we have some more things we're asking for. My analysis of what we should be asking for would be different if I knew what was being asked of us, or it could be different, I should say. Marianne made the point that this, this is focusing on the building code, again, with the underlying presumption, underlying assumption or premise that we've been asked to comment on the building code items and not on other items. I'll accept that that may be the case, I don't know, but there are other building code items, and I appreciate these may be the big-ticket items, but again, I think that we're going to be met with resistance down the line if we ask for other things if we don't ask for them now. I don't know if we're being told we need this by next week, the governor's office is saying we need this by next week, we need this by two weeks from now, we needed, I, again, we're doing this in the abstract. So on the assumption that we're simply initiating this, which is all I have before me, unless somebody can explain to me otherwise, if all we have before us is that we're initiating a request, I think we should take some more time and make some other requests. I think the world of Yolanda. I was one of the biggest supporters of elevating her to the position she's in now. Yolanda focuses on the code that exists and how to comply with it, not on what should the code provide. That's our job. And we, the residents, want to see things eased that are currently in the code. The people who are charged with enforcing the code and making sure it's complied with really are not the ones who ought to be running the show on whether these ease things, whether these, this easement or easing should occur or shouldn't occur. Their input's important, but the final decision needs to be here as to what are our residents asking for, and do we feel, after we have a conversation with the staff, that those are safe changes? We're not having any of that. We're just being presented with these items, these couple items. There's no discussion of the many other things that the residents are asking for as to whether those things are reasonable or not reasonable, and until we have that, unless we're under a deadline, I don't think we should be making a limited group of requests. Water tanks, I don't know if that falls into building, or if that's something entirely different, but I know that the residents need clarification code-wise on what they can and can't do to satisfy their water flow requirements. That's another issue. And I didn't mean to suggest that the like-for-like stuff needed to be in this letter, because I said that just dovetails with this.
Yeah, I think with the water tanks specifically, I mean, that's something we're going to decide at the local level. We've already allowed for water tanks to be applied for, and it's in conjunction with LA County Fire, and whether or not they're comfortable with that satisfying their requirements. We've made the, the steps to allow for a water tank, provided that the fire department requires, they can't meet the water flow without it.
We've done that, and we've been told that the fire department supports it, but I'm hearing that the residents are still seeking guidance because it doesn't exist, and if the governor, again, were to come down with an edict of some sort, it would make the, dealing with the fire department a lot easier, because they'd have that guidance from the state.
Well, I think that the, the water tanks are a combination of our municipal code, our general plan, our water, our local coastal program, and the fire department, and whether it's water for use of the house or waters for firefighting, and so I think that's more at a local level than it is at a state level.
If, if I could make a comment, this is exactly the reason why this is evolving. I'm being told we're down to just 10 people now having a water flow issue, and the water tank is, issue is becoming less and less of a constraint for others. But these are the things that are evolving, and I appreciate the fact that everybody wants to, you know, make one big request, but we don't know what we don't know. And I think the governor's office and the HCD has been very open about the fact they're willing to keep, keep coming back and revisiting things, and for, and for as long as that's an option for us, and I haven't heard that it's not, then let's, let's continue to evolve to meet the needs as opposed to try and anticipate everything that's coming up, because we're never going to get it all in in one fell swoop.
Yeah, I would like to explore what we can get in on this round, because it's all information, and I would, I don't know how the governor's office works. If they say no to the whole thing because we're over-asked, I would say this is our best bet, but if it's something where he's out there asking, what would help make Malibu recover better, safer, faster, whatever, more resilient, and this is the list we came up with, I do wonder if we could take, I don't want to take much more time, I want to respect Yolanda's wishes, but I also don't know how many opportunities with everything else going on in the country and people being distracted, how many more stabs we get at this. So I'm usually the, let's just shoot some darts in the dark, and hopefully we get a So that's my take on it. But I don't want to belabor this any more than it needs to. What would your turnaround time be if we implemented some other requests? I would imagine we'd have to agree on what's going to go in there.
Well, yeah, so I would say if we, we don't have consensus to move this forward, under what parameters do you instill for me to be able to sign a letter to the governor?
Well, let me say, I'm highly confident that asking for the world is not going to result in us getting nothing. I, I would be shocked if the governor's office would say, oh, they're asking for too much, so let's ignore their request. They're going to look through it in a very careful way, and they're going to select the things that they are satisfied they can do, and they're going to reject the ones that they can't. I'm also confident that if we don't meet a deadline that they've established, we're going to have problems. So again, it's important So again, it's important for me to understand, is this something we're being told we need to get in this week, which is why we're having it on a special meeting agenda, because there's no indication of that, and, and I can't act in an informed way without knowing that.
Councilmember, so I can, I can address that question.
Okay.
Because I was able to confirm with Candace.
Go ahead, yes.
Candace received a call from Fischesh, I can't remember his last name, staff person with the governor, to receive an answer to his question as to which building code standards would the city support relaxing to accommodate rebuild as soon as possible. And so Candace also just shared with me that he called this morning wanting to know how soon we would be able to deliver a response to that question.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. So here's what I'd like to suggest then, by way of us, an amendment to the letter. I'd like to see a narrative that says it's critical that we, that the, that the state waive as many provisions of the building code as can reasonably be waived that don't critically impact safety. So to the extent that there's anything in the code that has to do with environmental or sustain, not fire sustainability, but, you know, what we talk about green sustainability, those kinds of things, that they should be, I mean, and I can't believe I'm saying this as a Malibu council member, because we just, you know, I fight left and right against things that are not environmentally friendly, but we, we need to get these houses back, we need to get these families back into their homes. So anything that didn't exist when they built that house that has nothing to do with safety that's in the building code, we would encourage the state to, to go through the code with a fine-tooth comb and take it out with respect to these properties. That's, that's the request that I would make, if we don't have the time to go through them all and make, and for us, figure out what they are.
If that's a friendly amendment, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that also. Are we ready to vote?
You know, and I want to say, I, I, I'm very empathetic to the letters we've gotten from the residents, as well as the residents we haven't heard from that, that want more. And I, and I appreciate that we ought to be asking for more, but if we're under a time deadline, I guess what we can get is better than nothing, but I really would rather us ask for a lot more.
Is there more discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Mayor, if I could just clarify that the motion is to direct the city manager's office to prepare a revised letter for your signature, and that that can be sent without being reviewed by this body.
And the revision is what Bruce suggested?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I meant by my suggestion.
Doug, are you?
I am fine with that, thank you.
And I, as the second, am fine with that also. Okay, so we'll take a vote. Do we want a roll call or an all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We will now recess to closed session in the Westward Room to discuss the items listed on the closed session agenda. We will return to open session for the closed session report before the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I didn't think I needed to make an explanation.
You're only one person.
I know. I will not say anything I wouldn't say, Paul.
Each one of those things that you've made change, you need to explain why.
I agree.
I wouldn't hand it over to you, because I'm sure we're going to come back and get another one left.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
And you're, I'm, everybody do seven.
So are you city manager now, or, you know what happened?
I'm so sorry. Have a great day.
No, you know, we're asking some questions. Were you communicating with, were you, were you communicating with the mayor back in March? Were you being paid in March? Because we have an email that shows that you were communicating with the mayor.
Are you a real journalist? Do you have a degree?
A degree?
Do you have a degree in journalism?
I have a camera.
Well, hi, that makes you a journalist, an official.
What? I don't know, what does make you an official?
Tell me, what does? How do you tell me?
Why don't you answer my questions? Were you an employee?
Why don't you answer mine? Can you answer mine?
Well, you know, I got sayrabbit.com, is that not something you think is legitimate?
I have a Gmail account, is that not legitimate? I think so.
So are you city manager or still interim? I mean, if you'd like, you know, I asked for an interview with you, but Matt says you weren't available.
I, I don't even keep control of my schedule, but I wish you all the best. Have a fantastic day, Anne.
Okay, thank you.
This is the first section of the letter.
Well, that's why you're coming upstairs.
She's really allowed to visit.
Yeah, that's a public building.
Yeah, that's a public building, she's outside, she's not distracting the meeting, so it doesn't affect anyone.
She makes arms reasonable.
Just ask.
All right, this should be quick, right?
All right, you just got two guys.
Let's do it before she gets in here.
Are we ready?
May we please have a closed session report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this day, council reassessed in a closed session to discuss two matters on the agenda, personnel matters pursuant to Government Code 54957, and conference at labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Neither item had a reportable action, and that will complete my report.
Thank you. Then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.